So I'm going to say hello to federal fellow residents and welcome to this novel Zoom candidate meeting, not candidate forum, coming to your post haste in a novel fashion because we are battling a novel coronavirus. My name is Jenny Ayers and I am president of the Situate Library Foundation. And for those of you who have not had the pleasure of being hit up by us for the library construction, the Capitol campaign is now over. So we have the pleasure of getting back to our regular mission of asking you just to support the library because you love it and because it serves all of our citizens every day. So I appreciate being asked to do this and I am here tonight with Robert R.J. Dwyer and Andrew Goodrich, who are both running for the three-year seat on the Board of Selectmen being vacated by the long-term Sean Harris. Thanks to each of you for not only agreeing to do this last minute, but also for stepping forward and, you know, making an effort to serve the town, which we really appreciate. This is certainly not traditional format, but we're all in the same boat of kind of navigating this new normal. So we'll do the best we can. Also, thanks to Seth Pfeiffer and Situate Community TV for putting this out there. We are, let me touch briefly on the format, just so everybody's clear. This is a recorded forum, so it will get posted on social media and everywhere we can get it once we are completed. And I believe it will be on Situate Community TV tonight at nine. Questions are prepared by the foundations and the candidates have not seen them. Lucky them. The forum is not a debate, so I'm just throwing questions out and each of you gets one minute to answer the question. I'll alternate. I'll start alphabetically and I'll just alternate back and forth and take turns. Each of you will also have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. And again, I'll alternate. I'm the timekeeper and I'm supposed to enforce response times, but hopefully you're not going to make me do that. I'm not a great enforcer. All right, so let's get started. Each of you has two minutes for an opening statement. Dwyer goes first. R.J.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for hosting this and moderating it. Thank you to Situate TV for setting it up and thank you to everybody behind the scenes for really bringing this together, even though it's kind of coming down to the wire. My name is Robert Dwyer. Many people are in town. You probably know me as R.J., but on the belt, it'll be Robert. I've been involved with a lot of committees around town. I've been doing this for a couple of years now. I've been, I started out with the Economic Development Commission and from there I became their liaison to the Harbor Merchants Association, the Harbor Cultural District, and the West Cork Sister City Committee. And I am now proud to be a part of the Situate Loves Local, a new coalition we've brought together of community organizers and a bunch of different, these different groups around town to really address the, our reentry program for Situate responding to the novel coronavirus. I've been just incredibly blessed and very happy to have had the opportunity to work with such amazing people throughout the town and been very proud of what I've been able to accomplish in just this short time. And I'm really looking for an opportunity to expand what I've been able to do and to continue making this town a better place. It's a fantastic place. I've loved living here. My family's loved living here. And I really want to see it take the next step and really reach its potential and really reach out and serve all the people who call this town home. We do have phenomenal history, a lot to be proud of, and I think we have a very bright future to look forward to. And I want to see where that goes and I want to help lead us there.
Excellent. And thank you. That's great. Andrew?
All right. So first of all, I really want to just acknowledge some of the recent graduates of Situate High School and some of those especially who've been protesting at the Rotary and other places around town. It's really, it's an inspiration to see our youth get involved in the movement and talking about these issues. And it's, it's been heartwarming and I'm very proud of our town for what they're doing. The last few months have been difficult, very difficult. And some of us who have children in the school system, I have three young boys, trying to navigate has become very, very difficult. And I can understand some of those different stresses. What I will say is that my experience, when I graduated from, from college at Georgetown, it was right after 9/11. And one of my first jobs was working in the State House as a budget analyst during that financial crisis. So I've been there and I understand that the future of Situate on a financial side is going to be very, very difficult. And I've learned those lessons. And also for the past six months, I've worked on the Advisory Committee analyzing and looking at the budget to see exactly some places where we can make improvements and also ensure that Situate stays affordable because there's going to be some folks that are out of work and already out of work. We have to make sure that we stay affordable. But there's, but there's some good light at the end of this tunnel. And I want to thank Robert for the work that he's done for the Situate Loves Local. It's, it's a fabulous movement and he's, he and the whole team has done a tremendous job. So I wanted to thank him for that as well.
Awesome. Thank you. That's great. And thanks again to both of you. Obviously already serving the town in many ways and we appreciate it very much. So let's get started. First question, and I'll start with Dwyer and alternate, is what will your top three priorities be in the, your coming through your term?
That's a very good question. My top priority right now, it's the one that I'm currently addressing with Situate Loves Local and have been working on with the Economic Development Commission and with the Harbor Merchants Association, is really fostering our small businesses. They're a vital part of our town. They've, you're looking at individuals who have decided to stake their livelihood and their futures on our town and in doing so have enriched our town. And they need to be supported, respected, and they need our help right now. And I'm honored that I'm able to be one of the people helping them out. The second highest priority on my mind is communication. I don't think it's any secret that communication between town government and its citizens has not quite been what it should be. I really want to focus on fixing that. For example, the brown water. Yeah, we've been working to fix that and the citizens need to know when, what they can expect and when they can expect it.
Add a minute. Can you give me the third quick?
The third quick? Okay. The third quick one is shoreline protection. Now shorelines are a very important resource to us. And it's a very complicated topic. So even if I had a whole another minute, it wouldn't really be able to do it justice it deserves.
I hear you. And you know what? I appreciate, this is really difficult to answer these questions in one minute. It's a really short timeframe. So we'll try to hit on them. And what I'll try and do is maybe give you a 15-second or 10-second warning. Does that help?
Uh, yeah.
Keep it, and just keep it close. But again, like as you said, it's last minute and, you know, people are already voting. So we just kind of wanted to get your quick feelings out there, opinions out there.
Of course.
Okay, Andrew, I'm going to hit you with that same question. What are you, what would your top three priorities be?
Sure. So number one is addressing the financial uncertainty. There's going to be local aid from the state is going to be impacting our, our finances in the future. So we have to start preparing for that right away. Number two, one of the reasons why, the number one reason why I actually ran last year was because of brown water. And, and this has to be not only a long-term fix, but also I, I believe we need to have a regional fix and look at this as a regional issue. And number three would be bringing sewer to North Situate for business development and making sure that we have the ability to really help our local businesses, especially in North Situate.
Excellent. Okay. I don't think anyone's going to argue with either one of you on those priorities. So starting with you, Andrew, what experience do you bring to managing Situate Town Business?
Right. So as I've said before, I've worked in state government. I worked in the Romney administration in both external affairs, but also as in the State House on the legislative side, working through the budget. So I was a budget analyst as long as, as well as a legislative aide. I was in the Conference Committee, which is where the Senate and the House debate the budget. I'm there and I was there in that room talking about that. And again, for the last six months, working, you know, in the Advisory Committee, going through line by line, the budget here in Situate, I've been able to really analyze and look through some improvements and things that we can do.
Excellent. Okay. R.J.?
Well, I'd say my, my experience, I feel like I'm harping on at this point, but I've been working with the EDC for a couple of years now. And I've been working very closely with the Harbor Merchants. I have worked personally for a couple of small businesses in town, very familiar with what they need and what they go through. I've also been working with Mark Tenofrio at the Chamber of Commerce. My whole pitch is based on my experience working with these businesses and working with what they need. I'm, I have great relationships already with, you know, a lot of these business owners in town through my current posts and am even growing more as Situate Loves Local continues to expand and we start working with more and more people. And it's been a, it's been a fantastic experience. And I'm very happy to have those relations already placed.
That's great. That's awesome. Thank you. Okay. R.J., what is the one thing you would change about our town government?
Um, do you clarify town government or town?
Town. Um, town government, town. I mean, we're running for government.
Yeah. So the biggest thing I would change with town government is, is our communication. It's why it's one of my top three priorities getting in there. We need to make sure that when citizens of our town have an issue, that they're heard, that people hear them and that they know and can have confidence that they're not being ignored and that their issues will be addressed. And it's also very important that when we are addressing those issues, that they know what to expect, that there's a timetable and they know not just when it's working, but when we're trying something. And, you know, if, if we try ice picking and it doesn't give us the real success that we thought it would, that we're clear and open about that. And to accomplish that, what I'd like to do is establish a program with Situate High to teach people, teach our young students about how to do this and prepare them for the new and emerging field of community management.
Okay. Thank you. That's good. Yeah. And I'm going to make an executive decision here. It's hard to speak like three sentences in one minute. So I'll just give you the one-minute notice and then try and wrap it up as fast as you can. How's that work? Okay, Andrew, what would you change about town government?
Right. So, and I've been, I've been calling for this for, for over a year now, but I think we need to fundamentally reform how we do town meeting. And I was open to the idea even last year about moving to some sort of a hybrid online or virtual town hall meeting or a representative town hall meeting. The fact that 700 people at some point can come and make these decisions, I think were fundamentally broken. Not only that, but now we've had to postpone yet again. Now we're, it's June 27th, I believe, and somehow on a football field, try to make these decisions. I think we have to start thinking of new and different ways for us to, to actually run town meetings.
All right. So I'm gonna, sorry, thank you for that. I didn't cut you off today. Okay. Is it June 27th?
June 27th.
And I believe it just got postponed.
Okay.
I think we got the email today.
Well, there you go. I'll change my notes. Thank you. Okay, so.
No, that's town meeting, not town election.
Right, right, right.
Town election is still June 13th.
Town election is on June 13th. Right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Andrew, due to the COVID-19 and stay-at-home recommendations that we've been under for a good period of time, Situate's water use is way above normal. Given that there are already four new housing projects underway, and I know this is one of your issues, but it was a question before, what would you do to, you know, manage our valuable water resources in the near future?
Yeah, no, this, and this comes down to, well, number one, it really comes down to zoning and how, and how you're zoning and preparing and thinking about water resources and having really a long-term plan. And there, there has been progress made on this over the last year for better long-term planning for water resources. But I still, you know, I was disappointed that we weren't able to get commissioners to be a, like a water commissioner like they do in most cities and towns across Massachusetts to help really analyze and look at this. I was in the minority opinion on that, but I still feel that having more eyes looking at how we're managing is going to be more beneficial than the Board of Selectmen being your water commissioner.
Okay. For those who are not in the know, can you give a quick, we do have a water department now and how water commissioner would be in charge of the water department or how would that fill in?
So there, there were some proposals and it came over at town meeting a few months ago, whether or not we should have an elected board of water commissioners or essentially they would help set the rates and help, help kind of organize. It would be, it would be an elected position. And that was, that was voted down. But that, it would be essentially another position that you would vote for, for folks to then help manage those. But now those responsibilities are with the selectmen.
Okay. R.J., how would you manage water resources given the current conditions?
Well, it's a, that's a very complicated situation. As you, as it's been brought up, it has a very short-term component to it and also needs to have a very long-term look to it as well. In the short term, it's going to require coordination with the, both the water department and the Board of Health to know, you know, what we can expect, as, when we can expect these, this spike to be going down by how much and how we're going to be dealing with it while it's still high and whether or not we're going to expect another spike, you know, in the near future. As far as long-term plans for it, I, we really need to look into, investigate new water sources between either the North or South River. And we, I think we should also be investigating programs like progressive payment, programs that are going to reward houses that are using less water. If you're, you know, not around for eight months out of the year and not using that water and you come in and you're keeping your water usage very low, then, you know, maybe there's a break in, in how much you're paying for that because you're less of a strain on the system. And we can also look into tax breaks for people that are using low-flow toilets and more economical water usage options.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Question number five. Speaking of town resources, R.J., what do you think are the best uses for the old Pier 44 and Old Gates buildings?
Well, there are a lot of good ideas that I've seen for that. The old Pier 44, I remember having a conversation with a gentleman in town about using it as a town welcome center. Someplace, you know, for somebody to help boost our tourism and help direct people around town when they, when they're coming in. It's in a very good spot if we're targeting voters, which are a big part of our influx during the summer. As far as the Old Gates goes, in my time with the West Cork Committee, I learned about a project in West Cork called the Ludwell House, where they had basically turned it into a community workspace where people can work remotely from their, for their jobs because of a robust infrastructure that they had built there and really capitalize on that. And when you do something like that, you're, you have people spending less time commuting. If you have somebody that commutes an hour each way to work, that's two hours that they're not participating in government. That's two hours that they're polluting. And turning it into a space like that, it's great to progress our town and attract new entrepreneurs and also gives us a lot of environmental and economic benefits.
Sure. Thank you. Andrew?
Yeah, so.
I should refer to it as the Situate Community Building, which we sometimes know as the old Pier 44 building.
Right. We, to me, we have to make sure that we don't make perfect the enemy of the good. And to me, at some point, having a use is better than trying, for any one of us to pontificate about what's the, the perfect use for what it should be. Then this speaks to a larger level of having empty storefronts places and making sure that we have ways that we can utilize those buildings. So I'm open to any and all of those ideas that R.J. mentioned and other ones that we've heard about. Yeah, both like, not commercial real estate, but that, that shared office space method, I think, especially given the pandemic, could be really a way for us to look into. But to me, it's, it's not about one person. It's about listening to the community about what that larger plan moving forward will be.
Sure. Okay. Okay, Andrew, question number six. We are likely obviously facing increased costs having to accommodate for COVID and the new normal. On top of the fact that we're likely, as you mentioned earlier, looking at state budget, state aid cuts, you know, budget cuts. And how would you work with the town administrator to prioritize the cuts?
Right. So again, and I've been consistent with this, I still think that we need to cut CPC, which is the, the Preservation Act, the Community Preservation Act, which is about two and a half percent of our current property taxes. We need to cut that at least in half. And if we do that and we're able to then raise property taxes by 1%, so it's still less money. So you lower by one and a half, you go up by one, you're paying less. But in the general fund, you're able to bring in over now a million dollars a year to help solidify and, and start making progress against where some of those cuts are going to be coming from. So to me, that's, that's the largest example where we need to go.
Okay. R.J., how would you work with the town administrator to manage the budget cuts, prioritize, I should say, the budget cuts?
Well.
Potential benefit.
I think potential is very, very important word there, though we shouldn't kid ourselves. But I think we're very fortunate to have someone like Jim Boudreau, who's such a fabulous town administrator and is very effective at his job. And he's a man that I've, you know, come to trust and respect his opinion. I do think that before we start cutting other places, there already kind of has been a substantial cut made in that the town's head of planning and development, Brad Washburn, unfortunately left us earlier this year. And his role still has not been filled. Now, one of the benefits to someone in his role was that he brought in a lot of grant money with what he had. But if, if that money isn't going to be out there because of state budget cuts and federal budget cuts, then that, that role can go unfilled for a time, for the time being. But it's something that we're going to want to look into bringing back. And Brad was a fantastic guy. I had the pleasure of working with him a lot on the EDC and he brought a lot of value to his position into the town. But areas like that, that are reliant on, you know, resources that aren't going to be there are probably where we should be looking first.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Given that we are pushing 7:30 and I want to give you each time for closing remarks, I'm going to go ahead and do that now. Andrew, you get to go first this time.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for bringing this together. And I know this is a very unique format and, and Robert, thank you for, for joining and, and for running. I think it's, this is a great opportunity for, for folks to learn more. You know, again, I think this has been a very difficult time for a lot of folks. And I want to make sure that we are going to be able to keep Situate affordable. Oftentimes, I was kind of the, the skunk at the garden party on the Advisory Board because I would vote no a lot on projects because I was concerned with, with making sure that the town had enough money moving forward. Again, given my background as a budget analyst previously, I've, I've been there during a crisis to help make difficult decisions, decisions that impact my family and, and, and your family and people that are there who are worried about what's going to be happening. I've also, I think, been in a unique position. I've actually gone back to school about a year and a half ago to John Hopkins University to get my masters in, in public health communication, talking about, if I told people that a year ago, they'd say, what does that mean? Now I think people understand what public health communication means and the importance of that, to be able to communicate to people on, on a real personal level to understand what public health means. And I've worked in the, in the communication field for the last 10 years, explaining these difficult issues around, around vaccines and other sorts of issues. And, and so I, I, I feel like I'm in a unique position to give back to Situate, the town that I love and to see with all the difficult things that have happened, some of the wonderful things about supporting our business community and our, and our students has been heartwarming. So I urge everyone to get out there and if there's time to do the mail-in ballot or if not, come out on, on June 13th, then I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. R.J.?
I'd say, like, thank you again for, for moderating this. Thank you again to Situate TV for how we put this together. And thank you, Andrew, as well. You know, it's, towns like this are, are built on citizens that are willing to really put themselves out there and really invest themselves in the town. And that's what we get back is what, what we put into the town. I'm very, I feel very fortunate and very honored to have been able to put so much of myself over to this town. And I would really love to, to continue to contribute and put even more out there. I think that I bring a lot of youthful vision to, to the problems that are, that surely lie ahead of us. And coupled that with a strong experience, I think I bring a lot to the table. And if, if anybody out there would like to hear, you know, more from me directly, I do have a website, votedyer.com. You know, please reach out to me there, Facebook, shout at me on the street if you have to. I have had a couple of those while holding signs and appreciate every single one of them. I'm more than happy to hear from you. I want to listen to you. I want to hear what you want to see addressed. And like, like Andrew said, June 13th, mail-in app ballot if you, if you saw, can. But we love the involvement and thank you very much for your time and hopefully your vote.
Thank you. And again, thank you both. Again, you know, you've already, in addition to stepping forward when many step back, you step forward to run for the town. You're already serving the town in various numerous capacities. And we really appreciate you doing that and sitting in for this crazy on-the-clock one-minute-response Zoom candidate forum. But I think it does help just to kind of give, you know, it takes a little bit of, you know, half hour of your day and, and people will take a half hour to watch. And for those that don't or are seeing different segments, I do want to reiterate that yes, the election is set next, a week from Saturday, June 13th. As you both mentioned, mail-in balloting is still available. People are, there is, in addition to absentee voting this year, there is mail-in voting, early voting. So you can get the application still at the town hall. There's a slot outside the mail, outside the front door. You can fill it out there and put it in the mail slot or you can download it online and fill it out. They need your signature, your address, your name, and you can, it just needs to be mailed in ideally to them by the Thursday prior. I don't believe the office is open on Friday before the election. So in order for them to bring it over the election on Saturday. So there is time. So there is time for mail-in and obviously the election itself, the voting hours are from nine to 2:00 PM. So people need to be aware, those are shorter than the usual voting hours. And for more information, obviously the town clerk's page has everything you need. So thank you again, both of you for sitting in on this and I really, really appreciate your time and your efforts.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.